The regular meeting of the Texas, of the Board of Trustees of Texas South Most College District, trustees present are Dr. Ror- Rorobles, Dr. Robert Lozano, Mr. René Torres, Mr. David Oliveira, Mr. Trey Mendez, and Ms. Adela Garza called and said she's running a little late, but she will be here. And we move on to item number one, announcements. Do we have any announcements, Dr. Arribes? No announcements. Item number two, we move on to speakers, to agenda items in public discussion. Max, do we have any speakers? No speakers. Item number three, approval of minutes of previous meetings. Would you please look at the minutes from the December 8th, 2010 meeting?
I've actually reviewed them, Chairman, and I make a motion that they be approved.
I've got a motion from Mr. Mendez. Do I have a second?
Second.
With the motion, a second from Dr. Lozano. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Item number four, Physical Facilities Committee. I call on Mr. David Oliveira to give us a report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Physical Facilities Committee was not able to meet on Wednesday, January 19th as planned. There were two items on the PFC agenda for consideration. The first item was a report on the ITech leasing process from Mr. Irv Downing, and that item will be presented at the February 2011 meeting. The second item was consideration and possible action on approval of a proposal for locating an IDEA Academy campus at the ITech Center. In attendance this evening, we have Joanne Gama, who is the Chief Operating Officer, and Matt Randazzo, Chief Growth Officer, David Merrill, who's the Board Chairman, and Andrew Stanton, who's the Construction Project Manager. David, I think you're going to address this?
If I may, sir.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you this evening. As you know, as David has said, I'm the volunteer chairman, unpaid chairman of the Board of the IDEA Public School System. When I was growing up, there was a song that went something along the lines of, "I love to tell the story," and I love to tell the story about IDEA Public Schools. But I'm going to let some other people tell it more eloquently and more accurately perhaps than I do. I'm very pleased to be able to start the conversation, however, by saying that thanks to the fact that over the last several years, we've had a campus here in Brownsville, near Lopez High School, more and more folks have heard of IDEA Public Schools and seen the work that our really bright teachers are able to do there. And as a result of that school having been here, we're about to have our first graduating class, we have a waiting list. And there's a lot of good things that I believe can be accomplished through this arrangement, if you will, teaming up with each other on a project where there's a lot of synergy. To specifically talk about IDEA and a little bit more detail, Matt Randazzo will talk about our growth over the last few years, and then Joanne Gama, who is our Chief Operating Officer, will talk specifically to the issue of this proposal. Thank you for letting us be here today.
I wanted to take this opportunity to just talk a little bit about the work that IDEA Public Schools is doing throughout the Rio Grande Valley. My name is Matthew Randazzo. I'm the Chief Growth Officer, so my role is to help IDEA grow its footprint throughout the valley and also throughout the state of Texas. So if you'll bear with me, I have a handful of slides. You have a copy of the presentation in your packets if you'd like to follow along. So IDEA Public Schools' mission is essentially to prepare students from underserved communities for success in college citizenship and career. We'll talk specifically about some of those different measures of success in later slides. But we are a college prep, public charter school organization, serving the students in South Texas. Our vision is to ensure that the valley reaches its full potential, and we're going to do that by becoming the region's largest creator of college graduates. A very brief history, IDEA was founded almost 11 years ago in August of 2000, and that was an original primary campus in Donna, Texas. Joanne Gama, who you'll hear from in a few moments, is the co-founder of IDEA Public Schools. And it was founded out of a sense that we need to do all that we can to prepare our young people, again, for success in college, and that an IDEA education is an opportunity to really change lives and family trajectories, and ultimately to change and enhance the community. In 2006, we embarked on a pretty ambitious expansion plan, the 2012 Growth Plan, and our first expansion sites were here in Brownsville, our Frontier Campus, and then also our McAllen-Eddenberg Campus. So that was the launch of the schools. Subsequently, we have continued to launch schools. We're currently 16 schools, serving nearly 7,000 students across the valley. As you can see, those are our numbers from this school year. So the IDEA model is actually quite simple. Every single IDEA Public School student is in the college prep track. Students are not on a vocational track necessarily, they're not on different tiered tracks even within college prep. We believe in the potential of each and every one of our students to be successful and to matriculate into and graduate from the college or university of their choice. Part of how IDEA prepares students to get there is we employ an extended day and extended year model. So IDEA students are spending more time in seats, more academic time in front of teachers. We have after-school opportunities where it's guided study, homework support. IDEA Public Schools' teachers are issued a cellphone, and those cellphones are on until 9:00 PM. Kids have homework help that they need. If parents want to address an issue with a teacher, our teachers are accessible. We also extend the school year by a little bit. We, our students generally spend roughly two additional weeks in school, and we think these are the little bit of extra classroom time and academic time that we need to provide students to catch them up and make them competitive with other college-bound peers. Our schools are relatively small, so an individual IDEA campus is kindergarten through 12th grade. And in that campus, we have roughly 100 students per grade level. So once a school is fully scaled, we're looking at, again, from kinder all the way to high school to a graduating class, about 1,200 to 1,300 students on that campus. That makes a difference because when you have 100 kids in a grade level, every teacher gets to know every student, and there's great opportunity when teachers are collaborating around the performance of an individual student. This is a simple culture at IDEA that we expect a lot from our students and we expect a lot from our families. We have found that when you challenge students, and that when you set a culture of high expectations, they generally reach that bar. And the great thing about the IDEA model is that we can provide them with the support that they need to get there. And lastly, again, it's this partnership with parents. Families matter, parents matter, parent education matters. And so when you engage parents, we all want our kids to do well and to achieve their best. And when you engage parents individually and provide them with the tools that they need to support their kids, again, the results follow. So just to give you a snapshot of our current enrollment, so again, we've talked about, you know, roughly 6,800 students. The vast majority of our students are Hispanic, and the number that I really want to highlight here is our socioeconomic status. So three-quarters of our students qualify for free or reduced lunch. So to us, IDEA can only reach its full mission and potential if we're reaching out to low-income, underserved students, because those are the students ultimately that will benefit from the college prep curriculum and that are ultimately going to come back and enhance their community. So IDEA Public Schools does a lot of work to ensure that we recruit low-income students. By Texas law, all charter schools are open enrollment. So if we receive more applications than we have seats, we have to do a lottery process. And so what's critical to us is that we get out in the community where the students that we want to serve are living and involved in community groups and church groups, to be sure that we're telling the IDEA story and getting those students to apply, to be sure, again, that we're hitting pretty aggressive, low SES numbers on each of our campuses. This is a brief, this is a slide, excuse me, that really talks about IDEA's results vis-a-vis the state and vis-a-vis Region 1. So if you'll take a look at that blue bar, that is the results of the percentage of students who are passing all of their state exams. And as you can see, IDEA outperforms the state as a whole, even given that more than three-quarters of our students are low-income, and it's significantly outperforming Region 1 as a whole. And we'll get into this most recent success. Last year, IDEA Public Schools as a district was rated exemplary, the highest rating that the state can give as a school district. But even more so, every single IDEA Public School, every single IDEA campus was rated exemplary, including, of course, our Brownsville campus here. The U.S. News &amp; World Report does rankings annually of the best schools in the country, and IDEA's been very fortunate, as David said, through the hard work of our teachers, to enjoy continually high rankings in U.S. News. So we're ranked 13th in the nation, our flagship campus in Donna, and the number-three charter school in the United States. The campuses in Brownsville and McAllen are not yet eligible for ranking, because you're not eligible for ranking until you've had data from graduating classes, because they're looking at college persistence and how well you're preparing kids to matriculate and ultimately graduate from college or university. So IDEA boasts this 100% number, and that's 100% of IDEA Public School students enroll in a four-year college or university. That's a great number. What's, I think, more impressive is that 93% of these students are persisting today. And if you look at every major charter school organization in the United States, IDEA has the highest college persistence rates. So we do that two ways. First, we're preparing kids, we're preparing families, college is the vision, college is the mission. But beyond that, we're continuing to provide support to our graduates and their families once they graduate. So we have a team of alumni coordinators that work with the parents on FAFSA financial aid forms, that do the follow-up work annually, that help with the separation anxiety, that oftentimes it's more the families that suffer from the separation than it is the students. So we're continuing to provide 360 students to our graduates, or excuse me, 360 services to our graduates. And so that brings us to our purpose tonight, and I'm going to let Joanne talk about some of the specifics of the partnership and our proposal. But, you know, we think that this is a mutually beneficial relationship between TSC and IDEA Public Schools. I mean, first of all, one great benefit, I think, is that TSC is going to have a steady stream of college-ready applicants, students who are ready to matriculate into college and ready for college-level work. And as you know, IDEA students thrive in college, and, you know, universities struggle with retention and four- and five-year graduation rates, and that has really, has really been a sweet spot of IDEA Public Schools. There's no question that IDEA students are going to benefit in many ways, including perhaps, I say perhaps because we're very early in this process, dual enrollment or concurrent enrollment opportunities for our kids, a taste of college life, an opportunity for them to understand the rigors of college and being on a college campus, and also the cultural and social opportunities that can be provided by TSC. And finally, I'll end with saying that I think just the general mission synergies between these two great organizations. We all exist to strengthen our community. IDEA Public Schools has been doing that for 10-plus years, and we look forward to a prospective partnership with TSC to continue that work and to strengthen the pre-K 20 pipeline here in Brownsville. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Matthew.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Randazzo, if I may, a couple of questions. First of all, I have been invited and I've been on your campus, it's the one right next to Lopez High School?
Yes, sir.
I spoke to the high school kids, and I felt that, first of all, you're on the right track.
Thank you.
The energy and the enthusiasm that I noticed there on campus, not only coming from the students but from the administrative staff and the teachers, is tremendous, and I congratulate you for that.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. One is, I noticed in the tax testing that it took a dip in 2003. Why was that?
So, you know, candidly, as IDEA has continued to grow and scale its operations, we've had to continually think about an academic model that works. Any organization that's scaling has to figure out, how are we going to best serve our current students, but how are we going to have an eye to the future to continue to serve new populations? And that's essentially, you know, as we went through growth, we needed to, we needed to ensure a realignment of curriculum, we're looking at different state standards. So there's been a couple points on that slide, you'll see slight dips, and we've continued a steady rise over the last three years, being rated, recognized as a district, and ultimately exemplary. There's not, I think a lot of people think there's a magic potion that IDEA knows, that we've got this great formula. It's trial and error, candidly, and it's something that we continue to perfect and try to create a culture of innovation, and at times, we hit it out of the park, and at times, we go back to the drawing board.
Thank you. My other question?
Dr. Robles, could I ask, add just a little bit of what Matt said about that. You recall that the TOX exam and the state requirements have also changed and evolved over the last several years. In fact, that 2000 year, 2003 academic year was a year where they had a significant change and scores across the state went down. It was universal that the change in the TOX exam itself, from TOS to TOX, to TAX, TOS to TAX, is the, that's what happened in that year in specific.
And are you prepared, thank you, Mr. Merrill, are you prepared for the compass exam? I think that this year is going to be your first graduating class of IDEA here in Brownsville?
It is. This is our first graduating year.
Are they taking the compass exam already in order to prepare them for college readiness and entering the mathematics classes?
So, so students, they take, they sit for the same exams as public school students do, so those students are taking the tax exams. In addition to that, they're, they're focused on ACT, SAT, college prep. I don't know, Joanne, if you had anything to add in terms of the compass exam?
Prior, yeah, prior to being admitted to the school here, the School of Mathematics, for example, Algebra I, you have to have a compass exam, and you have to pass that exam.
Yep.
Maybe Dr. Arribes can...
For ACT, an ACT would also satisfy...
Right. So, you know, I'm going to be honest, I'll have to, I'll have to follow up on that point and get back with you. I'm not sure. I do know in terms of ACT.
Well, Doc, the Provost and I are agreeing that if you pass, if you do well on ACT or SAT, you effectively don't have to take the other, the THEA or the, what's it called now? Compass now. Effectively, you've leapfrogged over that.
It might be interesting to add, just to put the broad area that you're bringing up, Dr. Robles, in context. We had an academic retreat today, and we talked about a lot of these issues, and, you know, one of our major challenges at this institution are students who come who are not college-prepared. Just for a reference point, 50% of the students that come to UTB TSC are not college-ready, which means we need to do remedial work, which is expensive, frustrating, and difficult. So the fact that IDEA can deliver students who are college-ready, if we could solve that problem everywhere, our life would be much, much better at this institution.
Thank you, sir. Good question. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions related to your, to your curriculum. You obviously follow the state curriculum, but what do you do locally to go beyond the state curriculum to ensure that we're not just studying the test or teaching to the standardized test? What are you doing locally as far as beyond the statement of curriculum?
Yep, thank, good question. So essentially, IDEA Public Schools has a standard college prep curriculum where ultimately we're focused on, it's going to be a little bit of a long answer, but I'll get there as quickly as I can, where we're ultimately focused on getting kids to a point where their scoring commended on the tax exam, because commended is actually the best measure of college readiness. Saying that you accept, that you pass the exam, what the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board will tell you, and I'm sure the Provost would agree, that doesn't mean you're college-ready. So there's, even beyond passing, we're really looking to get kids to that next level of commended. But it varies somewhat campus by campus, so I'll give you a couple initiatives that we have, that we have going. So some of our schools are IB authorized, so, you know, middle-year program and diploma program. So IB is an internationally recognized, very intense college prep track that students take. The authorization process is many, literally many years, where they want to ensure that you have the right culture on your campus, from facilities to the proper number of volumes in your library, to the attitude of your teachers and your students in terms of a belief that all kids can succeed. That's an example of one of the curriculums that's active on the campus.
The only reason I ask that question is because not all kids are of the same standard. So you've got to be able to reach every student, and not necessarily just with a state-mandated curriculum, because everybody has a different learning...
That's...
And then, second, I'm just going to finish a couple of things. Do you mandate the, a pre-SAT, ACT exam before they graduate?
We do.
Do all students take that?
All students take, all students take the plan, the PSAT, the ACT, the SAT.
Is there a mandate related to that?
I have it, I don't have it with me today. At IDEA Public Schools, to graduate, you had to, to graduate with your high school diploma, you had to have been accepted into a college or university. And so we work with students and we work very early with students to start taking that plan and learning how to take, you know, a highly pressurized test. And so we have an AP curriculum in addition to that, that's kind of getting them ready. To your point, it's true that students come into IDEA in any given grade level, there can be a range of three to five grade levels in terms of preparation. And so for students that come in struggling, they're going to, they're going to have special one-on-one time with teachers and intervention specialists and do some of the remediation work in the third grade, so that we get them on grade level, so that they're then caught up. So that's the kind of differentiated instruction that happens.
And I support the idea that every student can learn.
Yep.
But there's some, is there such a thing in a school as a dropout rate?
So there, so, yes, I mean, there are students, and that as a last resort, the students or the families drop out of the school. Our goal is to keep every last student in a seat. When we lose a student, and we do lose students, when we lose a student, that's an opportunity lost, and that's a little less of our mission that we're able to fulfill, because we know when we're losing students, it's primarily because they're overwhelmed, because oftentimes they came in underprepared, and there is a massive amount of work that happens. A lot of college, a lot of college prep charter schools in the state of Texas in particular focus on secondary kids, and we think that it's important to plant these college-bound seeds and to provide primary kids, starting in kindergarten, with those skills so that we're growing students that can live up to the challenge. But yes, that does happen.
And I'm also interested in those numbers as far as dropout rates.
Be happy to provide them, yes.
And one last question has to do with, you have an open admissions, but you have an exam in order to diagnose the student before he goes into the one campus?
So we have an open enrollment process, and then there's, as a part of the matriculation process, is we collect data from the previous schools and other things. There may be an assessment after the student has been admitted to be sure that they're being placed appropriately. But it is an absolute open enrollment process. There is an application that students have to fill out as per Texas state law. Again, if we get more applications than we have seats, we go through a public lottery process where we literally draw names from, essentially, a hat.
I'm sorry that I have to ask all these questions, but this is the first time that we've received this package.
No worries.
I'm very familiar with this school.
Yep.
I used to visit your school, because I used to supervise student teachers, and I used to visit your campus there.
Okay.
And also had ACP students in there.
Yep.
So when you first came to Brownsville, I was on that campus many, many times. So I'm familiar with the school, but I wasn't familiar with the details.
Yep.
And I think tonight, we're only recommending the authority to continue with the discussion.
Yeah. I could, you see me, I can just barely stand it when you ask these really good questions, and I just can barely stand letting somebody else answer, but there's a couple of things that I wanted to emphasize for you. The first thing is, the secret behind this school, school system, is real simple. It's putting really good teachers in the classroom and giving them a really good campus leader. That's the essence. Everything that we do, and we, and all of us would admit that it has been a learning process over the last 10 years. It was never a perfect moment where we could say we were doing this exactly right. As recently as this week, we had board discussions informally about new looks that we're taking at the elementary curriculum and how we're going to, how we're going to work on that. It is essential, we follow two things that you have asked about. We follow regularly how our teachers, not only how they're performing in the classroom, but how they're feeling, and we follow, at virtually every board meeting, we have a discussion about the attrition rate, how many either professionals have left us, or how many students have left us. And we know, we try to know in every case why those students are leaving. We work hard to keep them in the, on the campus, we work really hard to keep them on the campus, and we work very hard on those issues on a regular basis. The board meets and discusses that every time we meet. And by, and I want to just, I will shut up now, I promise, but I got to tell you that the board meets in the no-excuses boardroom, which is, the no excuses means that we have no excuses. These kids can do it. We have to work with every one of them. We're committed to every child who comes through those doors. They come through by open enrollment, they may have to win a lottery to get there because there's a, we're significantly got a, we got a significant waiting list. None of them are sent away if they're admitted. Then we do some testing to see where they are, so we know how much work it's going to take and where they should be, and what it's going to take specifically for that child to succeed.
Where does your funding come from?
The primary funding, and Matt is really the person to address, is the primary funding, once the school is up and operating, is the same as the public schools, the average daily attendance allowance, only less than the regular public schools.
Yes, so the vast majority of our funding is state funding. Yep. We receive ADA, as David talked about. We can't levy local taxes, so we don't get that piece, so IDEA operates on roughly $1,200 less per student per year. Some of how we have to make that up is by reaching out to the philanthropic community. So examples of partners are the Villan and Melinda Gates Foundation, and the Michael and Susan Dell Foundation, the Charter School Growth Fund. You know, to date, we've raised about $35 million from the private foundation world. Additionally, recently, we were awarded two very large federal grants from the Department of Education. One, innovation grant that allows us to partner with PSJA School District to build a human capital pipeline in the valley, to ensure we have outstanding teachers in every single classroom in our districts. And then we also received a replication grant of about $15 million that will allow us to continue to launch schools, and the schools in 2011 and the 2012 schools that we're talking about, including our second Brownsville site, are partially funded from the U.S. Department of Ed. Yep.
I had just one question. How many of your, of your students are involved in our dual enrollment program? Do we know that, Dr. Arribes?
No, I don't. That's a great question. I didn't bring that data with me. I'm sorry, we should have...
I can find out for you.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Any extracurricular activities?
There are. They vary by campus. There's generally a boys and girls sport for every season, there's arts and music on certain campuses. Every campus has extracurricular activities for students year-round.
You mentioned fine arts also?
Yep, yep. Thank you all very much. I'd like to turn it over to our co-founder if I can.
I just didn't know if you all had any details at all, any questions or about the details of the expansion at the ITech Center. It happened to be a few months ago that I was at the Frontier Campus here in Brownsville, and we had some folks down from the White House who brought some UTB officials to, over to the campus to tour, and then a few weeks later, we happened to meet up at the White House again, and that's where the opportunity came up. I happen to mention that we've got over 3,000 students on our waiting list for our Brownsville school, and how we had decided it was time to launch a second site in 2012, and I... And I happened to ask these contacts at the White House, do you know of any property in Brownsville that would be really beneficial to a school that serves our community? And that's where the IDEA of the partnership came up and we were invited to submit this proposal for the ITech Center. There's a copy in your folder. If you know how, Matt talked a little bit about this, about how IDEA launches. We launch very small. Our launch pattern is to launch with kinder, first and second grade for primary and then sixth grade for middle school. And then we build a year at a time, so it takes about four to five years before we would have a full-fledged K-12 campus. So, the colors that you see on our proposal for the ITech Center, and you have a very small picture also in your packet, is the phase-in that we would do. We'd look to invest anywhere from, from four to, to five million in the ITech Center to bring in 50 classrooms to house the 1,200 students that we would have there, as well as adding a gymnasium and some intramural sports fields for our students. So, I just didn't know if there was any questions specifically about the plan or the design. It's very much in draft form. We're working with Gomez Mendez in science, who's also done a lot of the retrofitting of the current ITech Center right now.
I've actually looked at your plan. This is the first time that any of the board members, I think, hear about this, so we're kind of, you know...
You know, I was going to say, we, we had a PFC meeting.
Right, but they got canceled.
It would have been discussed then.
Yeah.
I understand.
Presented, and so I think what, what my motion was going to be is that we, we authorize legal counsel to enter into lease negotiations with them and make your presentation to us at PFC, a full presentation that all board members are welcome to attend and serve the PFC.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is, like I said, very much in draft form, just to see how we would fit, if at all, in, in a certain part of the ITech Center.
The plan, where exactly in ITech would they be?
It's the J.C. Pennies.
Okay.
That's what we're proposing. It's about 78,000 square feet of space.
And you'd be able to put the intramural fields inside or are we talking outside?
No, the intramural fields are right on top of the parking lot, so we would actually tear up some of the parking lot and bring in fields.
Yeah, I'm not, not familiar with, with pennies or dillars, but I know that in the past, we'd use dillars for storage and I don't know what pennies have been used for, but I know that it needs, it needs some, some work.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, our construction project manager knows, we'd have to do a lot of work to the roof and to a lot of the infrastructure in the building and we're prepared to do and are hoping that, you know, that be taken into consideration in the lease agreements.
And you said you're proposing four to five million in improvements, more or less, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, to bring it up to fit, obviously, when we're a public school, we got to meet standards, ADA standards, requirements and everything.
Once we see the proposal, I think that, that we can look at numbers and, and then make a decision on that.
Right.
Because I think the status of the economy, especially the state of Texas, that we're in a situation where...
We, we have several partnerships with other organizations. We partner with the Boys and Girls Club in Edinburgh where we use their facility during the day from eight to four and then obviously, the Boys and Girls Club uses it from four to eight. We also have a partnership with the Basilica in San Juan where we use their classrooms from one of our primary school, very similar to this in terms of, they just kind of gave us a building that the roof had actually caved in during Hurricane Dolly and we retrofitted it and so we're, we're very familiar and, and willing to, to negotiate in terms of lease agreements because we think it's a very valuable partnership for our students and our community.
How many square feet do you have now at the current IDEA school?
A current campus is typically about 85,000 square feet.
And this is 78,000?
And this is seven, this is 78, the J.C. Pennies is 78, but then we'd bring on our gymnasium and, and other stuff, so we would actually be adding square footage to the center.
That'd be a little bit bigger than the current school.
Yeah. A little bit bigger.
Is this something that's exclusive to the Rio Grande Valley or is this nationwide?
IDEA Public Schools?
Yes.
Right now, we're only a charter management organization in the Rio Grande Valley. We've got schools from Brownsville to Mission. It's our farthest school out in Hidalgo County. We have eight sites. Each site is two campuses, so we've got 16 schools right now. We'll be opening two more next year, one in Westlaco, one in Edinburgh, and we're hoping in 2012 to launch our second Brownsville site and our second McAllen site.
So, so you're proposing for our site kindergarten through...
Eventually, it would be a K-12 school, but in 2012, when we open, it'd be kinder, first and second, and then sixth grade.
Provide transportation, provide meals?
Yes, we do. We provide transportation. Each school typically has a fleet of 16 buses. We do all of our meals in-house. The gymnasium that you see that we've tacked on in orange has a cafeteria slash gymnasium, so we prepare all our meals in-house. If another opportunity became available and someone else wanted to prepare it, we'd look at that too, obviously. But right now, because of economies of scale, we have to. We bust our students.
What would, what would be the timeframe for those phases? You have the phases on there?
Yep, so Phase 1 would take us through this 2012 and the 2013 school year. We'd start Phase 2 so that it's ready for 2014 and then the last one probably in 2016. So, we'd space them out over two years, the phases.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Sounds like a very interesting proposal with some...
Dr. Oliveta, do you have a recommendation or a motion?
Yeah, my recommendation is, I would move at this time to authorize legal counsel to begin negotiations on a potential lease agreement with IDEA Public Schools to construct a campus at the ITech Center and then have them, have legal counsel make a, or bring a proposal and a presentation to the physical, next physical facilities committee, committee meeting in February and that all board members then would be, of course, invited to attend and, and we could hear the, more on the proposal then and all the financial implications aspects as well. So, that's my motion.
Do we have a sec? Do you have a second? A second from Mr. Torres? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five, executive session. The board will now convene to executive session as provided by Government Code Chapter 551.071 and 551.074. We now reconvene from executive session. Item number six, consideration and possible action on matters, discuss in executive session. Do we have any action, I guess, on the discussion of candidates for appointment to the transition team? Is there any action on that?
We're going to table that, aren't we? No?
I thought what we were tabling was the contract with a CPA.
Oh, okay.
That's the next item, but on the, on the executive session, I, I don't think we have any action. We're still going to continue looking at that?
We don't have any action to take on any.
Okay. Item number seven, financial analysis, entering into contract with a CPA to conduct financial analysis for the district.
I move that we table that item until we...
Can I second it?
We have a motion from Mr. Torres, a second from Mr. Oliveta. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is accepted. Item number eight, board policy. I call Mr. Daniel Renfro to present the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before, you have advertised for an executive director. That position does not exist in your policy, so what you have before you are two policies that would create the position of executive director and in broad terms, would transfer to that employee when hired, the duties that now are served by the vice president for Partnership Affairs, a UTB position that is not currently filled. So, that is the main purpose of this policy change. It, it does some other things. You have in your policy, a position of assistant vice president for Administration and Partnership Affairs. That is a TSC employee, but that position has not been filled in some time. And, and this policy as written would eliminate that position. Now, you could retain that position if you want. That's really two separate issues. This policy also goes on to mention the assistant vice president for finance, which is the other position that you're advertising for right now. So, policy 3.8 accomplishes those. It makes, as I said, some broad, some broad policy changes. For instance, right now, the UTB TSC president makes recommendations about hiring TSC employees. That function will go to the executive director when hired. The other thing this policy does is it does some cleanup. As you know, about five years ago, the name of the district was changed from Southmost Union Junior College District to Texas Southmost College District. Some of the policies were not amended to reflect that name change. And so, actually, I would say hats off to Kim. She's the one that went through there and, and found a lot of these technical details that needed to be corrected and she did a very good job with that.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Renfro. Do we have any motion?
Aye.
So, we have a motion to accept the first reading of the board policy.
Second.
And a second from, from Mr. Mendez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number nine, proposed meeting dates. We have proposed meeting date for February the 17th, March the 24th, April 28th, May 19th, and June 23rd. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
But, but are we looking at a special meeting date on this? Did we decide on that or...
Oh, for, for your subcommittee?
No, no, for...
For the, to go over the consultants.
To, to, or the list of consultants, we'll just call it, whatever.
I think we, we need to wait and set it once we have...
Some names.
Some names.
Yeah, why don't we find out when we get names and we can confer via email, see what everybody's availability is.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, would you like to maybe make some public comments about kind of the activities during the week? I think it would be nice for the public to...
Yes. Thank you. Yes, we've, this week was very positive. We had meetings with the chancellor of the UT system and his group to talk about what our relationship is going to be going forward and we had a very positive meeting and we have a couple of models that we're looking at of a continued relationship with them. Different, different from what we have now, but definitely an important relationship for our two missions and goals going forward. And I think it's been very positive and that's what our transition team is going to be working on in, in the near future and we all are very excited about defining what our roles is going to be going forward. And I don't know if anybody wants to amend anything else to that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead, Dr. Robles.
They, the chancellor and his team, once again, reiterated to us that they are here to stay. They're here to start the four-year university and they're here to, to enhance education for the people of South Texas, whatever they can do to assist us so that we can, we can create a relationship in which is, is positive for all the citizens of the South Texas area. That's, they, they came in, in that spirit. So, for that, of course, we, we all thanked them on behalf of the trustees that weren't there and, and we've got, we've got some work ahead of us and I think that it was a, I agree, it was a very positive meeting.